All right, Mom. No?
So you're gonna need some help and a forklift?
Yeah, basically. Basically, it's like the wrong candid camera.
Is there a person in her office? She closed half of it and moved the other person in the back. One person does deal with that. So she can prove there's a liar. Am I lying? Did she do that? I'm not saying why, but did she do that?
I didn't know that. Interesting. Have we gotten applicants for this? They have to gather the signatures first. How many signatures do they need? Twenty-five. I'll slide over one to give us a little more. Perfect. Sounds good. A roll is hot? Slide this way, too. Reach over the fence with Roundup. Oh, yeah, it's too late now.
I just bought that house behind you. It was herself, the big one, the five-ezer. Right across from me. That's personal, like, in the same garage. And I didn't even thought about it. I figured on that one, because I there was something now I wish I would've bought it. I thought about it.
Hello.
Well, why the hell didn't they tell us before we didn't buy it?
I was really nice and it was kind of like
That'd be saying we could
Yeah, because you did have a fair if they don't like it, then I kept it. Congress is giving not being able to put it in the barn if you wanted. Because of the lost revenue.
And it's an island group?
So is that, I guess?
Oh, 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 yes, right. And it has to be there.
But yeah. Yeah, it'll be worth it by the time we try to spend it, but
There's like plus the pants, who knows?
Nobody gave me the bipartisan deal.
Yeah. No way.
I think that's beautiful. Every year, somebody comes back and returns that. No, I'm
In real life.
All right, we're on.
Brenda apparently will not be here tonight.
She really doesn't I won't make it personal.
Are you ready to go, Tina?
Yeah. And I needed to do this presentation to shut the house.
Okay, we'll go ahead and begin with a continuation from our July 7th meeting with respect to the Economic Development Partnership and recommended updates to the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan.
Okay, so this is the this is our basic economics update for the year. Everybody should have this in the email that I sent. But there are some things I wanted to go through before we decide what our economic development plan is. Thought it would be helpful for everyone to understand what our statistics are showing at this point in time. So I will try to run this presentation. Probably should have done it in the PowerPoint. Okay, this is the state of Utah quick facts. There are a couple of things to notice on here. One is down here, we have our average wage and then the median household income for the state. So the average monthly wage is sitting just below $4,000 with a median household income of $71,381 per capita at $46,200. So that, keep that in mind as we go through Morgan County's specific numbers for where we sit based on the state. So these are unemployment snapshots for the region comparing us to, we are in a region with Davis and Leaver County. So based on where we were sitting, this, this one is actually dated March. Let's see where I see it. It's March. But year, year over here, Morgan County had from March 2019 to March 2020 a total increase of 20 jobs. Pretty exciting, guys. And that, um, but what is interesting here is our change in dwelling units compared to Morgan County. So in 2020, we're dropping slightly, but you'll see as we go through the prior years why that is. The other thing that's interesting to note on here is down here at the bottom of our sales tax. Even compared to our neighbors statewide, we were leading at 14.6% for this period for Morgan County compared to Leaver County at 7.1, the state of Utah at 6.3, and Davis County at 7.9. So while the state is doing well, sales tax-wise, Morgan County over the last several years has been exceeding the numbers in the state. All right, so here's our demographics. This is going to come into play as we talk about home prices later on. But I wanted to point out that we have, by our population numbers, 94.6% are, consider themselves, I'm not sure what terminology is, identified as white, not Hispanic, with 3.1% being Hispanic Latino. Morgan County leads the state in people below poverty level, as in we have the absolute lowest percentage of our population in the county who live below the poverty level. We set that bottom part of this at 4%. So, and then in bachelor's degree or higher education, we actually come in fourth. We're behind Summit County leads the state, followed by Utah County, then Wasatch County, and then Morgan County. But our percentages are quite a bit higher than the rest of the state, almost 6% more of our population with a bachelor's degree or higher. Okay, so here's our change in jobs since 2009. When you have only about 2,600 jobs in the county, 20 jobs is actually a lot. And you can see where we lost jobs after the 2008 recession and then we were growing. We were adding, going back into before the COVID emergency, we were at a steady increase of 1. This is what's interesting, our construction permitting dwelling units. We were up for, this is for 2018, we were up 400% for dwelling units with the total permit value up 331%. So not only are we building more, but we are building more expensive than we have done in the past. This is where it gets really interesting as compared to the state average. Our average monthly wage is below the state average by $500. Our average monthly wage is $34.63. So wage earners inside the county are below the state average by $500. But our median household income is above the state average by $27,000, $27,494, so $27,500 above. What, what this, and our per capita income is above state average. So what this is telling us is that the majority of our households are two-income families or they work outside of the county.
Outside the county, yeah.
So, just interesting to know. In 2018, we had a less modest increase in our sales tax rate. We were only at 2.5. But as we get into our major employers in the county, if you go through this, you'll see that we have the school district and the county as the top two, with Holson as number three, Browning as number four, then Ridley's as number five. What is interesting to note here, though, is that Young Chevrolet and Young Board are listed separately at 17 and 9. If you combine those two, they would move up the list and probably be up above Ridley's. So depend, it's interesting to me that they are considered two. So, that in mind as we go through. These are our jobs by sector, non-farm jobs by sector throughout the county. And where we were adding jobs is we were losing in goods production and in construction, but we were adding in services production. Also interesting, if we back up one, Rite Systems makes the list for the first time in this, in this one. That is one of the reasons why you're starting to see these increases in the more, on the professional side and services in our jobs. All right, so year-to-date, this is where the majority of the jobs inside the county are by this chart. We are, the most jobs inside the county are construction with, with government being at 22% and trade and transportation being at 18%. So, yeah. All right. So what is interesting here in, apart from one month, in 2016, Morgan County has experienced job growth every month since the end of 2012, although this trend may not continue in light of recent economic events. New jobs were added by government, construction, professional, and business services, with every other industry besides manufacturing losing jobs. So we are changing slightly in where people are employed in the county. So that was in December 2019, we switched, just as we get going into, at March 2020, going into the lockdown, what we're seeing again is March is the first month in 2020 that Morgan County has experienced year-over-year job growth. So we, we slowed down at the first of 2020 and then in March, as we all know, we went into lockdown. So things start changing drastically at that point. By June 2020, our unemployment rate is still below the camp, below the state and definitely below the national average here at 3.6%. State of Utah at 5.1 and the United States at 11.1. So this is where you start seeing the surge in unemployment wages. One of the things that the, that the Division of Workforce Services noted here is that while there's been a significant decrease in the number of initial claims for unemployment insurance after the significant spike following public health directives, the number of initial claims seems to be resting at a new average level. Prior to the public health directive, Morgan County saw an average of two claims per week compared to about 10 claims per week after the initial surge wore off. Morgan County's 2019 wages were roughly 12% below the statewide figure. It should be noted that much of Morgan County's labor force works in nearby metropolitan areas, so many of the county residents' wages are earned elsewhere. This is interesting, in 2019, this is actually a chart, you can't tell because it's all blue, because that is residential construction compared to this little blue line. The line right here is non-residential. And this one is additions or alterations right here. So you can see that in 2019, the vast majority of construction permits issued were for residential property. This is going to come into play in a little bit. But this change in residential values and non-residential values, you're starting to see in 2014, a large investment in business here. In 2018, this is how we came, became number one in the state with this 425% increase in values in non-residential value within the county. With this increase coming in, impacting the change in overall values for property within the county. So again, in 2019, you're starting to see statewide, the increase in sales tax was 10.2%, while in Morgan County, it was 28.8%. So we are starting to see residential build increments total 30 throughout August and are 20% above the same date from 2018. And gross taxable sales in Morgan County grew by a massive, this is not my language, but the state's language, massive 28.8% in 2019 compared to the same time in 2018, well above the state rate of 10.2% for the same period the year before, or the same period. So, all right, going into 2020, year-to-date, we're starting to see this balance out between residential and non-residential permits issued, although, you know, not, we're not huge numbers, so it does have a huge, it does have a bigger impact. But again, Morgan County's even in, so keep in mind, this is May 2020, and even in the shutdown, Morgan County was sitting at 14% above the year before for sales tax and the state of Utah was sitting at 6.3. Morgan County has seen positive growth in, in gross taxable sales since late 2016. So. So what this is showing us then is we get into, and these, these are hot off the press just released last week, the average house value by, and tax by county for 2019. Morgan County ranks third beside, behind Summit County and their value is at just over $1 million and Wasatch County at $719,000. Morgan County comes in third at a very modest $422,688. When you consider that, that average estimated property tax on a home is now $3,040, puts us in third place. Now, keep in mind that this, these are the residential exemptions here. Give this value at 45%, that's 45. So this is your taxable value. Keep that in mind as we talk about commercial property being taxed at 100% when you see the next numbers. So estimated average residential property tax ranked by county for 2019. Morgan County again breaks third behind Summit County and Wasatch County to the lead. Wasatch has built several schools, that bonding has pushed them over Summit County in estimated property tax based on average value. So, and that's typically where we see our growth is not in county taxes, but in school taxes. This shows that calculation. If you go through this table, it will break out based on general property tax, cities and towns, schools at the biggest percent, special districts, and then your total taxes charged. So Morgan County again seems fairly reasonable in the allocation between the city, the schools, and the county, and then your special districts. This is interesting if you're in Mountain Greenbody, because this means that our special service districts are actually taxing a higher rate on property than the city is. So, also, just FYI, because I find it interesting, the talk in Utah County over their 100% increase in their property taxes, this is why the county is sitting at 8%. The school district is sitting at the same position, but the cities in Utah County are, the vast majority of those numbers have switched. You can see that Utah County has not done a truth in taxation or levied rates the same way quite some time. So, just interesting. All right, we'll see if we can switch this around. All right, so where this gets interesting is we have been above average in our average rates by county for the last two years. That is a shift in 2016 when we were below the average every year before now. So we are changing where we sit on our tax rates. Okay, now I'm going to move it back. Which way do I want to go? There we go. Hey, I've been tracking this, these are my, so my charts aren't as beautiful as the Department of Workforce Services in the state of Utah, so you can tell which one's mine. But I've been tracking this since I got on the county council for the last six years over where we're sitting. Morgan County-wise, residential value versus commercial value. So when I consider residential value, I consider both primary and secondary residences. And then commercial property, just for your information, for the data that goes into this, is I also hold a personal property for businesses that are taxed at the business rate is in the total commercial property. So that is land, buildings, and personal property within the county. So I started this chart at 2002, although the numbers go back farther, but it is in 2002 that we moved from a centrally assessed system to a local tax system. So this, the numbers are skewed funny in the prior, in the first two years of the century. So I just left it here where we're comparing apples to apples in it. What is happening here is that even though, when you chart this, this is our total growth in value for all property within the county. This down here, this little line is where commercial property guys falls into that value. And this line coming this way is the ratio between the two. So even though commercial properties are staying steady in the comparison to your residential property values, we are experiencing this kind of a decline. We've gone from, I have to go back up to remember if it's 72 or 77, 73% down to 18% over the last couple of years. So even though with a slight uptick in values, now why this matters is when you're growing residentially like this, this is where you get the strain on the school systems. And after a while, when, when you're trying, you're, you're seeing that same thing happen in Wasatch County, as that, that residential value increases, it becomes less and less attractive for a business to come in and recharge that tax rate at 100% on business property. So the success of the businesses within our community becomes more and more difficult as they are, as they are faced with, with paying that 100% value on land, building, and then they are also charged the personal property tax on the equipment in the building. So that's, that's where it matters. All right, so we're going to focus here a little bit, coming into some, the good news on where our sales taxes have increased, because it's always nice when sales tax increases because we didn't have to do truth in taxation and levy it on anyone ourselves. So this breaks out by NACs code, where those sales are coming from. This big purple box is retail motor vehicle and parts dealers. This one is private motor. So between those two, we are heavily weighted towards vehicle sales. And this one down here is your food services. So, or retail food and beverage stores. So this is your grocery stores, anywhere that they're charging the grocery tax. All right, so you can see over time since 2003, Morgan County has been increasing in its, this is the raw data, these are the taxable sales, not the revenue that's coming in, but we have gone from $49 million in 2003 up to $123 million in 2018. 2019, we grow again. And during that time, as you can see, we still are in, oh, if I could click on this, I could get you the exact. We bounce up and down quarterly. We have, the majority of our taxpayers are quarterly payers, not annual payers. So if they're a seasonal payer and have revenue that comes in at a certain time of year, you will start to see the quarters jump around like this, so it's not necessarily unusual. All right. I'm done with this. I know you're all so thrilled with all of my data. All right, so this is where we sit by NACs code, the red bubbles. So these, this is our total, just the sales tax that we bring in as a county, not property taxes included. The green full is the total taxable value, or the total sales. So that's, all of them can add it together. And you can see the trend is up substantially. But where we, where I track down here is the blue down here in the bottom is your grocery store. And then the purple, no, the blue is manufacturing, so you can kind of see where we're growing manufacturing and then staying steady. And then retail is the purple, retail beverage food. So your grocery stores or food sales are down here in the purple. But what I did here was I put in this green line, this is vehicle sales, because it is by far our largest, by 10% highest, is the closest, the next NACs code comes to the, to the type of sales that we're having. So it sits right around 20% of total sales is coming from retail motor vehicles. And then you add the private vehicle sales on top of that, so this is your total, and you can kind of see where it fits into your total sales. So that's, it's interesting to me that between those two, we're getting above 25% of our total sales for the county. So it is interesting. So. So for your guys' information, these are all in your packet that I sent you, broken out by NACs code and economic sector. You can go back from 1998, so there's 21 years' worth of data in your, in your packet that I sent you, and then I highlighted it for my information as I was putting the chart together so I could tell where everything was. All of that data goes back through time, and as you can see, I really like Excel, so. All right, so you got two pages' worth of data there if you want to look at it. And then. All right, where this, if we break this down to the city, the city isn't, is easy, they changed their reporting style in 2010, so it's harder for me to go back and break this into revenue generation. So what I've done here is for the city, this is sales tax revenue per year. This is revenue, not taxable, this is what they're getting in to the city, and then their property tax revenue. And then this is their total operation revenue that they're doing with taxation for their budget. While their calendar year is different than our fiscal year, so their new numbers are in for 2020, but I can tell based on the numbers that the, that the last two months of sales tax data are not, they are not accurate. So I didn't let, I didn't put them on yet, but in the next couple of weeks, as those are finalized, I can update it for 2020. But whereas, what's interesting about this information is you can see that their sales tax revenue has gone in 2010 from $410,000 to $844,177. They more than doubled from 2010 to 2019, where you're only adding about $110,000 in property tax. So what this is showing us is if I take it down to this chart, this line here is the total tax revenue over time, over those nine years. And this little dip here is interesting, it was an actual decrease in property tax. So the purple line is the projected sales tax revenue. The, the blue line is the actual receipts of sales tax revenue. So everything from here down is how much of their budget is sales tax, and from here up is property tax, up to the orange. So this part here is their property tax, this is their sales tax. So as this increases over time, this is actually what you expect to see in a city, cities are funded with sales tax. So that's doing exactly what it's meant to do and give them less and less of a lien on their property tax. All right, so doing the same thing here for this takes your taxable sales, this is overall, gives you the view of where it was overall with vehicle sales being the, the green line. and then food sales being the blue down here. So these are not, what's the word I'm looking for? Total, they're not totaled together. This is just as a portion of the budget by themselves. So their vehicle sales as they've increased over time. What's interesting to me is the trend lines are very, very similar. What this, what it indicates to me, the city may see it differently, but this indicates to me that when people come into the city and are buying a vehicle, they're going to lunch, they're staying in the city and buying something else in the city. Or it's also like this with Mauricio, when the dealership does well, they travel through Mauricio's business. Mauricio ends up charging them tax on those transactions. So as it's growing exponentially in the city for taxable sales, this is an incredible healthy line. Same thing here. So you all have the backup data for how I got to those charts in your packet. And that is the conclusion of the informational packet today. So what I would take away from all of that is when you're looking at how you help business in our community succeed, which is really what I consider economic development, is when they succeed and they do really well, we do well because it is their success that generates our revenue in tax. And if they're not doing well, then we end up raising taxes and collecting revenue in a different way. So as we look at what our economic development plans are, we should be looking at how do we help the businesses that are here continue to succeed because, and how do we diversify that tax base so that we're bringing that effective rate for property tax back down and allowing businesses to relocate here or come here instead of just grow here.
Thank you. Any questions for Tina? So I'm, my question is, how does that relate to the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan? Is that just for later in the discussion?
So the strategic plan then takes that information and you have to decide. So if you go through that strategic plan in your introduction, you'll see that it, it talks about all of that data. And it's, and, and then where do you go from there? With only the 100,000 that we have to work with, if this, if the county doesn't put anything else towards it, that's what we have to work with. So how, where should the emphasis be with the needs that we have on how do we improve that outlook by doing what actual things as government? And so that's, that's the reason I feel like it's helpful is know what, where you're standing and where you want to go. Now, have we identified the tools that will get us where we need to go? And are we funding them accordingly? So that's how it fits in.
All right. I have just a couple of things that aren't on the agenda. I got a call on Wednesday requesting, so apparently there's a private enterprise that's doing, it's, it's not a fair fair. And it's going to be held over in Peterson. And they are raising money for the Morgan Education, what's it called?
Foundation.
Yeah. The Morgan Education Foundation, that's where the proceeds will go. And they have 12 vendors and they've secured a permit from the Health Department and figured out what they need to do. Yeah, I think you're right. Operation OCI. I can't take a good note. I've got the operation and I have education. Okay. That's why I was confused.
Now, now it makes sense.
Okay. So that's what they're raising funds for. That's where the proceeds will go. They have 12 vendors and they're requesting a waiver of the temporary license fee, temporary vendor license for each of those vendors. That's $20 per vendor or $240, which seems fine to me, but I wanted to bring it to the council and.
So when they do Operation Graduation typically over at the fair, they get, we don't charge them for the rental of that booth where they do the food there. So it would be pretty much allowing that same.
Okay. Any objection? Okay. I'll let them know. Or Stacy, can you let them know? Do you know?
Does that mean they still need to fill out the form? They just don't pay the fee, I assume?
I would, I'm not sure what's on the form. To the extent that it includes some kind of indemnity or waiver, I would have them fill out the form and then just not, and just waive the fee. It also keeps track of who's there. So I think that's advisable. Thanks. Let's see. So I got a notice from the state that we're still working on our audit. What, can you just give me an update on that as to where we're at and what we need? Is there anything we need to be doing presently?
No. The reconciling, accounting, accounting, I can't, and the justice court right now.
Okay. When do they anticipate finishing that?
My accounting should be done by the end of the week.
Okay. All right. I'll bring this back next week, but we did get, we authorized the completion of that plan for the airport. And we had them do a takeoff or a budget estimate for the cost to do the improvements. And it's not insignificant. I'll forward this to you so you guys can take a look at it. But the total cost of the improvements in terms of the cost estimate are $273,000. So I think that's something we're going to have to consider carefully in terms of whether we want to move forward.
273,000 total or?
Total. That's the total estimate for the improvements to add in the two and a half rows.
So is that buying water rights in there too? Or is that just the work on it? Because my understanding is we don't have water over there?
There, there are some things to work out on the water side. The improvements listed, not, like I said, I got this after the deadline, so I don't, didn't put it on formally. But there are culinary water improvements here totaling 53,948. There's service connections and meters. I don't see acquisition of a water right on that. So I'll send that to you. I just wanted to let you know it was coming.
We know what the payback timeline would be based on the lease revenue for that. Or can we calculate that before the discussion at least?
We can calculate it. Any other items that you guys want to discuss as part of the work session? Sure.
So the deadline to file is Thursday. We had anticipated that we would take those that had filed and schedule them on your agenda. So that we would have that on Tuesday and then being the packet on Thursday for you to make an appointment in your office at 18:00.
Okay. So what Stacy's talking about is the public notice of vacancy on the Morgan County Council, which is a short term. It expires December 31, 2020. And there's a Thursday at 5:00 PM deadline for submissions.
So if no one applies, do we extend the deadline?
I think we just pull some sucker from the audience and stick him up here in a chair.
Do we have any applications yet? I had heard there was one gentleman that might apply, but I didn't know.
Did you say someone picked up an application, but nothing's been submitted?
What if nobody, what was that? Nobody submits?
Yeah. What do we do?
This is a six-member council or five notes probably.
Is that what happens? I mean, I don't know what the.
I don't, I don't.
Nobody wants to do it. They don't want to do it, right?
I don't think you just pick someone at large for a district's position. So if no one in that district applied, you'd have no eligible candidate. So you'd just be a six-member council. I guess I'd break the ties. You never have a tie. You do.
I would, yeah. I mean, if we could pick someone at large, I would just pick Darryl and put him back on.
The applicants have to live within the district and go get 25 signatures. I think that's right. And pay a small, and pay a small fee, I believe.
Oh, we're charging them too?
We should give them the small fee in addition to their monthly compensation.
We'll offer a bonus if they're willing to do it.
They may have to start doing something like that.
I thought I heard something. Was that Roland on the phone?
Is he planning on calling in?
He was.
He told me he was going through the mountains of Washington, had service spotty, so.
Oh, okay.
Maybe he's out in the valley.
Well, it was this morning when he told me he would try to call in, so.
I texted him and asked him where he was at, so I didn't know he wasn't going to be here. So that was during the work session. He told me that.
All right. So in terms of our agenda tonight, are any questions or changes to the agenda that we wouldn't want to talk about before we get our meeting going? The only thing I'm aware of that will come off is Brenda Nelson's, the first item. And there are no minutes. Okay.
So what is Brenda doing if we're, her budgets?
You want me to say it loud too?
No. If it was $600, I wouldn't have had her come back. She needs more money.
How much more?
It's a few grand.
Stacy? Would it be possible to get numbers on these items instead of bullet points on our agenda in the future? We'd just like to be able to refer to it by item number, whatever.
Which is a big deal in the last meeting when you had 86 items on there. Of course, 84 of them were Lance's, but.
Thank you.
So what I would propose is that we take a 15-minute break because we don't normally start our regular session until 6:30.
Right after the DMV calls is no, I can't go and register.
Sorry. I didn't know. Okay. We'll reconvene at 6:30. Lance, I have a couple of things for you. I don't think I caught that, but these two sentences still had me just a little bit perplexed. So I don't know if you want to just take a copy of these and then you'll have them and then we can go over them.
Well, you need to walk through them.
Oh, I'll walk through them.
Yeah. That'd be easier. Then I'd get you real life, yeah.
Yeah. So there's just these two pages that have changes.
Let's not, let's not lower.
Interesting.
Oh, wait, wait. Yeah. They turned it down when they found out they were at the top of the pace though. And I thought the top of the pace. I'm turning it down, but it worked. So did that meeting happen last Tuesday?
Yeah, it did. I'll follow up with them after. I raise his questions in terms of the way that we're actually taxing and doing things. I mean, I think I have an idea in terms of what we could tell them, an assumption could be. But it's just an assumption because we can't make a decision as the council. It's a juncture.
Sarah's recording from the meeting at 12:00. Sarah's on the phone saying, speaking for me. I never like to be spoken for. But regardless of how I put that, I think I can speak for myself.
Yeah.
So I had, by Tuesday morning, I had three different tax questions.
So this is, this is related. It's from the Secretary of Interior regarding executive orders on building and rebuilding monuments to American heroes. And they're doing a garden. Who would, who would have that portfolio assigned? I mean, it's basically there are any statues or monument, your locality can donate or loan to this effort in addition to the 31 individuals listed. Are there any other American heroes who should be recognized? And the mission of God is Americans, it was a place we started discussion.
So this is where I end up with the monuments.
Thank you.
Or the devil's slide. So I'm surprised that they sent you anything.
So is it this date that you're working on at this point or is it?
It was, it was a courtesy notice. It was pleasantly written.
And I'm surprised that you got it.
Okay.
There's your update.
Thank you.
You're headed towards B. Center. That's right. There's two long...
Jen, Jen, Jen Jones.
If he said August, they'd keep...
Oh, it was like, oh, get out of here.
That's where the conversation, we were happy this time. To test what came in.
He did a five-inch plus back behind, and he sold the one acre.
Another layer.
They're not sure. Also, they, they think it's a plant, and it's successful, not accurate, so it's time around.
You're a politician. So there's 28 acres.
Because we talked throughout a bunch of...
If I had control, it would be a thing, that all of these central districts have us to the area, and they don't. Ollie, you gotta send me a review, I said, just because I'm a good judge. Same thing with our lead, so... Can't does, but... He's got more teeth than me, dude. Tell you what, though. When they're... They're busy, it's supposed to be a project. Then it's... Shouldn't the buyer's district have the law? It's not exactly so long, you have the... Yeah, it's good if you're... I don't need to be worrying about this. I'm asking you to stop. What's going wrong, what are you kind of doing, you kind of trying to turn it around? That's, what am I supposed to go with that? There's nothing I can do. They're fine, they're well inside, I'm sure, well... But they don't, they haven't... But they still don't have the infrastructure, and they still don't have this, and I guess it will give us... And there's not... If they need some... He said they're liable, and they don't. Well, it's like, I do love them. Just want to clarify, I was thinking, and she's... Or the other side. So you, you're pumping, that's... Is that her thing? Is that possible? And that's... Have a pipeline? No. What have they done? Innocent business practices policy didn't even help us with that, you know? To not live in that business practice. They've been there for the last three years. It goes from there. It's gonna solve it. Why don't you tell me? They have the... Anyway, I'll just have to... And then just eliminate all my... You can see the orders. I have a lot of... I don't... I got a net. That would change their activity, and so they might want to point them in or something. It wouldn't shift it, right? It would still be a more calculated... We'd do a, we'd do a... Yeah, I was popular, I was on that, I was like, don't do that, don't do that. You're... Did you see it? I eventually did. I shouldn't have called you, dude. I didn't know that she was a lot of pressure. So one, one, so we look at the meeting, so by the way, I was... She said, come let, come let's work, and that's good. I can't see a one call from that. They said, when I got to any time, I don't... I'm actually crying now, like, they were hammered before. I agree. Oh, yeah. There are several people that are at the inspection, and I tried to order... Their bike has... Because they should just be paying. That's why I made that clear to everyone. FYI, I'm just trying to see if it was... They locked in, and they were like, they're not going to talk. But we have a good... They were with us, they were his right to... Right, and they think we've been... The last conversation, they're students, and you can just harden up your audition, just tell them you're ready, it's okay, but please have like, you can't run your own. That's not the way this... Not, not Bobby, not Bobby's. So we'll park it at the airport. See you guys later. So it's very divided. To answer your question, it's very divided. And everybody's really calm when it's divided. Irrational and logical conversations. I would like to thank the, the temperature in here for allowing me to wear my new jacket.
All right. We'll go ahead and call our regular meeting to order. It's Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Member Haslam may join by phone, although I think he was having difficulty establishing a good connection. We'll begin with a prayer and pledge of allegiance by member Kilmer.
Our dear, kind Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity we have to get together as community members and discuss the issues that face our community, and work to make decisions to maintain our wonderful community and our beautiful quality of life that we have here. Father, we thank thee for this county, and for our landscape, and all that we have, and the people that we have, who are such wonderful people. Father, we ask that thy Spirit will be with us tonight as we go through this meeting, that we have the meeting of community, or the feeling of community and camaraderie, that we work together to always better and maintain the good qualities of our community. Father, we ask these things humbly, in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, member Kilmer. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Okay, a member and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We don't have any minutes to approve, or is there any conflicts of interest that need to be declared with respect to items on our agenda this evening? Okay, hearing none. We'll open up the public comment period. If there are any members of the public that wish to speak to a matter that's not on our agenda for public hearing, you have the opportunity to do so now.
I honestly think you guys would miss it if I didn't say so.
Absolutely.
Kelly Mountain Green, and I hesitate to bring this up, but it is a point of contention in the community right now, the meeting that Weaver County had, helping that annexing Mountain Green. I know, Sarah, you were there, and I've listened to the recording, and I'm hoping it's just something that they explored and think they're not, that's not going to happen, because the majority of Mountain Green, despite what was said, is not for being annexed into the different county. I don't even know why Weaver County's exploring it, it sounds like a land grab to me, but I've gotten tons of calls, and I'm reading those calls to you guys, just so you know, because they want to voice their opinion to somebody. So I've given them all of the council members' names, and the Weaver County commissioners' as well. Does one of you have heads up?
I'm sure they appreciate that as much as we do.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council?
I'm, I'm not really here to explain or talk about anything, I'm just here to introduce myself. My name's Ken MacArthur, and I am the new Gordon County Firefighter. I took Boyd's old squad when he left, and I've met a couple of you throughout, as I've gone and done things, and emailed some more of you. But now that you're actually having meetings in person again, I just figured I'd come and put a face to the name, and say that I'm glad to be here and looking forward to serving the county, and everything I do for the wildland fireside.
Great, thanks for coming and making the introduction, we appreciate it. Do you live here in the county?
Um, we do, just recently moved in, just over in Riverside Bojery Apartments for now. I'm looking for a house.
Not easy, by the way.
No, I mean, I have five kids, so...
Yeah. Well, thanks for introducing yourself and for serving our community. Appreciate it. Good luck on the home search. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public comment period and move to our first item on the agenda. We, we did postpone again Brendan Nelson's discussion with respect to adjustment to the Recorder's Office 2020 budget, which brings us to Joe Garfield, discussion, decision, request approval of hangar lease at Morgan County Airport for pad EE1, and for David Wolf and FF1 for Josh Bond. I don't see Joe here tonight, and I noted that, has he submitted the forms of lease? So I, I think I'd like to see the forms of lease, and frankly, I think these would be both on the expansion rows, and I think we ought to discuss that in connection with the proposed expansion. It may be the best way to move forward with the expansion, to execute the leases and collect some funds, but I think where we don't have the actual forms, let's go ahead and postpone that item. I probably should ask for a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion to postpone by member Cannon, and seconded by member Newton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Okay. Next item, Lance Evans, discussion, decision, public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Morgan County Ordinance, sections 8-2, definitions 812-17, concept plans 812-14, preliminary plats, 812-32, final plat, 812-46, utilities, to clarify requirements for the provision of services in subdivision developments. This matter was on our last agenda item, and the public hearing was held at that time. Staff has revised the draft languages per the county council's direction at that July 20th, 21st, 2020 council hearing.
Yeah, and I don't know how much want me to add to that, we could make those changes that you all requested.
Some people may. And I, I gave Lance these comments just before the meeting. So I'll go through these. It doesn't look like there's anyone that signed up for the public hearing. I'm not opposed to reopening it if there are. Is there anyone that wanted, in the audience, that wanted to speak to this matter specifically?
I did.
Okay. All right, let me make my comments, and then I'll take a motion to open the public hearing. So I'm here on the definitions of words and terms, section 8-2-1. I would end the first sentence with, to serve the property, period, and start a new sentence, it is not a commitment. And then, in the third sentence...
Sorry, sorry, will you go back, tell us where you're at?
I'm on section 8-2-1, definitions of words and terms, in the definition of letter of intent.
8-2-1, oh, okay.
And what I would, that sentence that starts, the service provider can provide conditions of service, such as whether there is sufficient utility capacity, the required infrastructure to safely and effectively deliver the utility, I would strike if the fees are paid on time, and replace it with timely payment of fees and connection charges, comma, and, I would strike if all required, and replace it with requirements pertaining to those steps. And then I would insert that must be, delete the word are, completed before the final plat is approved. So let me just read that sentence as I'm proposing it, because it's kind of confusing when I take the deletions out. The service provider can provide conditions of service, such as whether there is sufficient utility capacity, the required infrastructure to safely and effectively deliver the utility, timely payment of fees and connection charges, and requirements pertaining to those steps that must be completed before the final plat is approved. In the definition of will-served letter, I would strike in the third line, they will extend, and say, plan describing how the applicable utilities, and I would insert, will be extended to the development. The reason I'm making that change is they, is unclear in my mind of whether it would be the utility company or the developer, and I think under any given circumstance, it may be one or the other. And so I'm just saying how the applicable utilities will be extended, because it could be the developer making the extension, it could be the utility company. And then in section 8-12-24, in section 4A, in that sentence, I would just add, between capacity and for at the end of the second line, that will be utilized. So it will read, that their system has capacity to serve the proposed development, comma, documentation of such available capacity, there's where you misspelled that word, Lance, now that you pointed it out, I see it. Capacity and specifying the amount of such capacity, that will be utilized for the proposed project. So those are the modifications that I would propose.
Also the line, 1217, should be...
Oh, yeah, that be, that's, that's, that's one sentence as opposed to two, so existing and proposed, comma, lowercase d, demonstrating that such utility is available to or may be extended to the property. Thanks. Any other comments from the council or proposed revisions?
So, Lance, just for my clarification, because I ran into this this week, the immediate access to water for fire protection as determined by the fire marshal is, what about in Mountain Green Fire District? Are you wanting that to be a county, are you wanting that to be...
It wouldn't be the jurisdiction that it, you know...
So, because, and that's where the conversation went this week, is technically, the fire marshal right now is Dave, is Dave Rich, only when I, in talking to Boyd, he, he suggested that it go through Odie instead, so do we want it... Anyway, I, so I don't know if it needs to be fire marshal, or if it needs to be, if it's the fire marshal, then it... the fire marshal, then it, then we run into Mountain Green doesn't necessarily have the fire marshal, they have their fire chief. And...
So just as to term of, by the...
Higher authority.
I don't know. It's a question. I don't know if we need to...
Authority.
Let's make it clear, is that, that's a little bit vague. We could put fire marshal or appropriate, other appropriate agents.
Yeah, I always look to Bobby for the technical language.
Or designate me.
Would the fire marshal designate the fire chief for that revision?
Sounds like Boyd did. Did Boyd tell you that he would have that...
But Brian Rendell did it for Mountain Green.
But you say that Boyd suggested that you get OD sign up?
No, that was me. So my conversation with Boyd, and we were talking about who would be the fire marshal, because that's the way it's reading, and we were going through some other things, but it was reading the fire marshal. So I called Boyd, and Boyd said, no, that really shouldn't be, it should be Brian and not Dave.
We could sort that out in an email probably tomorrow, just to make sure, because the fire marshal still does have certain authority over the county, even within the fire district. But if Boyd's willing to suggest that change, we could easily make it, I think.
So to make it even more complicated, that's one of the things we were talking about, is if we were doing those fire inspections every year with the fire marshal as per the code requires, then would that fire marshal then be contracted out into, from the county into the Mountain Green area, because Mountain Green is still a part-time, it's not necessarily doing those same inspections that Dave Rich has been doing. So with the county providing the overall, but having a fire district within the county, it creates a little bit of who is the responsible party between those entities, so.
And also, just to address the code aspect, I mean, there's a semantic, not semantic, but the actual process of the day, how that would happen.
And that's...
To give the authority to the fire marshal in those, in his jurisdiction.
Yeah.
Outside of his jurisdiction, we could have that appropriate authority.
Well, and that speaks to the larger question, because my understanding was that the county was over fire countywide, although the fire district, and that's where I'm not really sure, it would really be more of a question for the attorney, is if we're doing those fire inspections on new construction, or if we're, or in this case that we're talking about in dividing for, if we're making sure that the service is there for fire, then it does become a real question over who does that determination. Is it the county who is over fire, which I was told multiple times this week? If we're over fire, where does that leave the fire district, especially in a wildland fire situation in some of these areas? So...
The Mountain Green Fire District, Brian Rendell, the fire chief, is the one that responds to and provides his comments for anything being constructed in his district.
So is that who's doing it now in these inspections?
I don't know who's doing the inspections.
But that's who signs off?
Reviewing and...
So is that true for infrastructure as well as building permit?
I'm sorry?
Is that true for infrastructure as well as building permits?
Fire flows.
Okay.
That's the water district, but he's telling him whether or not they have the right fire water flow and what's required. You know, Brian weighs in on subdivision access, that type of thing, makes the call there or not, the fire marshal, in the fire district.
So would it be as simple as putting the fire marshal or the fire chief, or?
Fire chief or...
So Lance, I got a question, and you probably don't know the answer to this, because I wouldn't think you would, but maybe it's something to consider. When this fire district was created, was this question answered at that time? Were these duties transferred to the fire district? Because I look at the county, fire marshal has specific duties separate from the fire chiefs of these two, you know, of the county. I also look at the fire district as an enhanced service, and that Morgan County still has some responsibility there, because that, I mean, that's typically how we look at those districts they want. They wanted more than what the county was able to provide in their typical services. So those voters voted to enhance that service with the fire district. But in the creation of that, perhaps those duties were transferred to that fire district, but maybe we could look that up in that creation document and see if that happened. If not, because that would answer your question.
It would.
As to who did. If that wasn't transferred, then I would think the fire marshal maybe should be doing more over there or not, or we can address it and transfer that, officially transfer that, those duties to that individual or that office. But that would help clean this up.
Yeah. It would also help, and as we go forward, we were talking about how we track that and charge for it and in those fire inspections that are coming on, and whether or not those are annual inspections in a business, and who would be responsible for that within the district. So that was the conversation Boyd and I were having, is over those responsibilities of the fire chief currently and how we track and pay for that. So that would help clarify, if it's written and spelled out in that, it would clarify what we should be doing to make sure that we are...
I think it's worth looking at and seeing if we can clean up both things at the same time.
Well, and I think code is pretty straightforward, and if we don't want to improve it tonight, that's fine, but I think at the end, if we just put as a term of a fire marshal or other appropriate fire jurisdiction, and then leave it at that, then the code says, it's where we've got the responsibility.
Right. I'm good with it saying fire marshal if we clarify what that means where, because it really should be the fire marshal. That is the definition of the job for the fire marshal. But where the clarification needs to come is where the delegation of that duty went. If that comes through the county and then it's delegated to OD or someone else in the fire district, but that chain of command is the only question, I think.
And I would agree with that.
So you could say by the fire marshal or other designated official from the applicable fire department or district?
I think that still leaves that question out there, though.
Oh, as to who it is in each given district? Oh, yeah, I think that needs to be answered separately. I'm just saying if you wanted to go forward, because you could say the fire marshal with respect to every, you know, all areas of the county other than within the Mountain Green Fire District, and the fire chief with respect to all areas within that district. I mean, we could be more specific. I'm just saying if you wanted to leave it general in the code, then it's the fire marshal or another designated official from the applicable fire department or district. But we would still need to answer the fundamental question when a permit is processed, who those individuals are. And I'm, that's just a suggestion, that we don't have to follow that.
Probably worth asking the fire folks just to weigh in, just to make sure we don't word it incorrectly.
Okay.
If that's okay, just on that issue at least.
Yeah.
I don't have any concern about getting their input.
So they could ask all the stakeholders from Mountain Green and from Morgan and get word that they're all happy with it.
Okay. Any other questions for Lance? Thank you. All right, I will take a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to go into public hearing on this item. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have like, I've printed off six of these, so I'll just, I'll take, I have one for Jan. I was, this didn't have anything to do with my comment, but the state laws and everything on that last language you guys have been discussing happens to always say the authority having jurisdiction, and then it is kind of left up to them, or makes it a lot simpler. That could be the marshal or chief or whomever happens to be, but that's what state laws always say, always says authority having jurisdiction. So my comment was...
Can you just state your name and...
Oh, I apologize, David Pitcher.
Okay, thank you, David.
I think the changes to the code in general are a good idea. Obviously, there are some problems and issues there with some subdivisions. However, specifically as the language relates to the, or the change in language to 812-46C, how they want the, to just say, they'll basically follow the International Fire Code. You can see there from the document I gave you, that the International Code Council, which actually writes the International Fire Code, the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, they are the people that write those codes. That's an interpretation there that somebody requested. If the International Fire Code even applies to single-family residences, obviously 95% of the structures in Morgan County are single-family residences, and so saying that we're going to follow a code that doesn't apply, obviously doesn't tackle the issue. It just doesn't work with saying, well, we'll follow a code that doesn't apply. So I think that, I think it needs a change. The way it's written currently doesn't work, but the change that's being proposed actually probably makes it worse, because at least the way it is now, the fire marshal or authority having jurisdiction, you know, at least trying to make the correct interpretation. I know most jurisdictions actually write something, the 812-46A and B both try to do that with actually stating what's necessary, but that's obviously not always followed, because one house has a tank, the house next door doesn't have a 10,000-gallon tank, one has to have a fire hydrant, the other one doesn't, somebody has to have a 1,000-gallon well, somebody else doesn't. It all kind of seems to depend on who they talk to on one particular thing. And somebody called me last month, actually asking why they were being required to put in a fire sprinkler system. Somebody from the county, I guess, told me, call me, don't know why. I advised them that technically the county can require a fire sprinkler system for the state fire code that was adopted, unless the county specifically adopts ordinance specific to fire sprinklers. So just think that some more thought needs to go into writing that code, clarify it so that it isn't up to, so it's an interpretation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the council on this matter? Is there a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So with respect to Mr. Pitcher's comment, I think that is something we ought to look at, just to make sure we're being clear about that. The way I read this language is no use shall be permitted unless it's shown that there is an adequate supply, as per the International Fire Code, of an immediate and immediate access to water for fire suppression. I didn't read this as indicating that residential structure would have to comply with all elements of the International Fire Code. I read it as indicating that there's a water supply, fire suppression requirement that's in the code that we're tying to, or are we trying to impose the International Fire Code on residences?
No, this is just for the adequate water supply, follow the International Fire Code.
All right. And then I'm going to go back and read subparts A and B as well, just to, since we're going to postpone this, so.
So was that a request for a motion?
You'd like a motion here? Yeah, well, what's that?
Was that a request for a postponement?
Unless there's other items that you'd like to discuss.
I don't know, let's do it and move on. Mr. Chair, I move that we postpone this item till our next meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I see Joe Garfield in the audience, and where we just missed his item. Would it be appropriate to back up?
Yeah, but let's finish this one first.
Okay.
So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So motion by Member Newton to postpone this item till our next meeting, seconded by Member Swan. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Joe, we actually postponed your item for two reasons. I spoke during the business meeting just about the fact that I was going to get to them the information on the bid to do rows EE and FF, and I noted that these two leases are on those rows, and we didn't have copies of the actual leases yet, and so if you can get those to us, then, you know, that was part of the reason why we wanted to postpone.
Those leases would be pending the future development.
Right.
As we go.
Okay. But usually we get the form of them submitted for purposes of the approval. So if you could get those, we can talk about that at the next meeting. The other thing that we talked about in terms of the estimate to do those improvements was if we could come, you know, put together something that provided an estimate of what the repayment would be pursuant to the leases, assuming that they leased up pursuant to a reasonable absorption rate, you know, how long would it take to recoup that investment? If that's something that you can work on, that would be great. All right? Okay. Okay, our next item, I have to check these off or I'll get lost. Member Newton, discussion decision, review approval of potential CARES Act funding expenditures.
Should I, we skipping your item? Did I miss that?
His is after mine.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right, it is. Never mind.
I thought we could do similar to what we did in our last meeting in reviewing some of these. We have representation from the school district here to talk through those items. We've got some representation from our emergency management department and our fire and EMS. So the bulk of the items that are on this list are represented here. We've even got some internet representation back there as well. So I guess to start off, we kind of left this, we approved several items for, particularly for the fire and EMS department at our last meeting. I noted on the document that's in our packet that the date that those were approved by the council. There's still a number of items here, obviously, that haven't been approved but are on here for us to review and talk about. I thought maybe we'd talk first about the school district items and go through those. There was, there's been some discussion, and I want to get some clarification, and I think Scott can provide that for us here. The school district has received, or has or will receive some funding. I don't know if that's direct from the feds or from the state. It's not near enough to cover these items, as I understand it.
Or any of these items.
Or, and is likely allocated to very different things. What we want to make sure we understand, and Scott, I'm sure you can explain this very well, and I'm probably not explaining it super well, but we just want to ensure that anything that we are approving is not covered under other funds, so there's no potential for double-dipping or the appearance of that. Does that make sense? So what we'd like to do is just confirm that the other funding that you've received has been allocated and what has been allocated to, so that we know that we're not crossing over.
Okay.
So, and I think Austin relayed that message to you. Okay.
Have you received a copy of my response to Austin?
No.
Okay.
I forwarded that to you.
Not that I saw, but...
Okay.
Sorry.
I can take a copy or...
Of the 68 million that the feds allocated to the state of Utah, Morgan School District's portion of that was $45,903. And so we have about four of these, six hundred of that has not been spent yet. The bulk of that's been spent on masks, thermometers, hand sanitizer, disinfecting like spray bottles, signage for the schools, and then...
like spray bottles, signage for the schools, and then we're allowed $1,200 for each principal to come up with miscellaneous needs that they might have in their school. So that's where the $45,000 might be there to break out of that.
That's perfect.
So basically, it's the PPP or the PPE that you've used it on. I think that's the only reason, if we have to ever have, go back and explain, if Stacy ever has to go back and explain after I'm gone, that we, that we have the documentation on it, so.
And it sounds like you've got it, we'll just put that in with our, a copy of that in with our documentation, so that when we are audited, we can say, no, it wasn't, you know what I mean, it wasn't accounted for twice here. This is what the school district spent the money that we allocated to them on, and this is what they spent the money that was allocated to them on.
And there is about four dollars of something that hasn't been allocated or spent yet. If we could provide an update, that would go pretty quickly as we get into school.
I'd imagine. Once kids start dumping hand sanitizer on the floor and fun things like that.
Austin, did you want to say something?
Can I, maybe I should have worn a mask, so I don't invade in Scott's face, but give me six feet, sorry. I just want to add with the school part of it, last week I was on a phone call with the Division of Emergency Management, and Kevin McCully with the Department of Health, he's part of the Unified Command, gave a pretty long speech on how we need to help the schools out. This is probably something maybe nobody else knows, but the money that was allocated for, the CARES money was allocated through, I don't even know how to, the kids that are reduced or free lunches. And so a lot of the districts got a lot of money and ours didn't.
No.
So I actually on a statewide call said, yeah, when our district told me how much money they got, and I got through laughing, I felt bad because I shouldn't have laughed at the superintendent like that. They really didn't get the amount of money they needed. One thing that I was just informed through the Division of Emergency Management this afternoon, is I'm going to receive a significant shipment of N95 masks and also face shields for the schools. For us, it's a significant shipment. It's going to be 2,250 N95 masks and 900 face shields for the teachers and employees. The big concern with the emergency managers is the burn rate on masks. Nobody knows exactly how many masks are going to be utilized by the schools on a daily basis. I was talking, maybe it was Scott, maybe it was someone else, there's a thousand students going to the high school a day. So if we use a mask a day, that is going to be exponential on, number one, getting them, acquiring them, and number two, the cost is going to be crazy.
So are you assuming if a student forgets, that we'll provide?
Yes, that's the assumption.
And there's a broad range of assumptions you might have, how.
How this all works, really? So, so just to clarify, so the reason I, I have to tell you that you guys are way out ahead of it, because I was following up and asking people, as I've talked to other county officials across the state, and we had actually met somewhere, nobody had heard from their school district yet. And then, over the next three days, after I sent it back, everybody heard from their school district. So you guys were just out ahead of the curve. So it is happening, but that's one of the reasons why the demographics I was sharing at the first of the meeting matter. When it comes to things like this, Morgan County never gets allocated this money based on those demographics, and that will not change. So I feel your pain.
So we have to, we have to fill the gap. I don't know if that's appropriate way to say it right now, but that's basically what Kevin McCully said in the thing, is as emergency managers, as counties, as a community, it's not going to be enough, and so we need to fill a gap. And just like you just said, I felt happy that we were already in the process of having those discussions prior to last week's emergency management call last Wednesday. So when they started dumping this on it, there was quite a few emergency managers that had a panic attack right on the phone. And I was like, we're working on it. So, anyway, that's for his part.
So Scott provided a really good narrative of each item that's in your packet. Has everyone had a chance to review that? Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
Scott, thank you. This is, it's a beautiful document.
Yeah, I think this was exactly what we needed, so.
It's the first time that I've done something in Word instead of Excel, so it was a stretch.
He's a numbers man.
That's how I feel about using Word.
I do want to note one item, that is, we had some discussion just via email about the tables. We, that was tentatively approved by four or more council members. We just need to ratify that in this discussion, and then, of course, approve other items as necessary.
So the, I have a question on the internet access. I'm not, somebody just explained the technology of that to me in terms of what does, what is outside internet signal? You're just talking about improving the internet system within the community generally?
No, this is at the buildings.
Okay.
And so it's really just adding access points to the exterior of the building. Currently, we're focused in classrooms with all the access points. And so this would be to be able to allow at Mount Green Elementary School, the courtyard area to have access.
It's Wi-Fi outside the school.
Oh, so somebody on school grounds. Somebody that doesn't have it at home comes to the school grounds to access the internet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or potentially they could hold a class outside, or.
Yeah, so the teacher could, you know, move some of their instruction outside during the class, or family could, if they had it at home, could come over in the dark at night at the high school parking lot and down with their.
Hey, I've done it before, so. When I'm on vacation, I'm on a random search sometimes, so. If you leave your it on at night without a password, I may use it.
Hey, I pay for Wi-Fi in my house, and I'm on a random search these days. Everybody's using the Wi-Fi.
Sometimes there's some school districts that have Wi-Fi on their buses, and they'll go park their buses in neighborhoods.
Yeah, several rural counties do that. And Davis County was doing it, actually.
And then in terms of the Chromebooks, so this is just an additional 100 Chromebooks that you're getting?
Yeah.
You must get them for a good price.
Yeah, they're $250 or something with the license. So they're not the fanciest laptops, but they're worth it.
Yeah, they do a huge portion of what they do at schools.
The breakdown on the individual cost is on the spreadsheet, if you want to see it. It's $269.13 per Chromebook, and then $25 for the license.
Okay.
So Scott, you'll keep records at the school for who was issued, how many of them got used, and so that if we ever had to, we'll pull that, right? But I would assume you would do that anyway with, with equipment, that school equipment?
Yeah, the principal's man today, and I wasn't in the meeting, I don't know the outcome, but we're at a district level, one-to-one, or real close to it, on devices, but some schools are, have more than others. And then not all the devices that we use in a classroom are functioning at a level of, of comfortable setting at home. We have some carts that are seven, eight years old. So, you know, we have 40 Chromebooks on cart. You can get 20 of them up and working for a class, but they're not all 400%. But on these, we can, we can be careful about how we allocate them, keep a record of where they go.
So not to date myself on this, but I happen to have kids in the school during the last time we were ordering under a program like this, and what didn't get ordered was the software for them. So you, these, you've included in this the software, so that they're all going to be usable?
Yeah, but the soft, because we're at the level we are with the devices in the schools, they have the software on them now, and these things.
All right.
So this doesn't directly relate to that, but I've heard the reopening plans of several districts vis-à-vis the news. What is the Morgan County School District reopening plan?
We'll be holding school all five days of the week. We're not doing a split schedule, we're not, we're not doing any kinds of split. But we are, at this time, planning to release school one hour early on Monday through Thursday. But it will still be a regular early-out day. And there's really two plans. One is the students in class, in a traditional setting, the students will be expected to wear a mask when they're on the bus, when they're passing in hallways, or when they camp in social distancing. So if they're working on a group project, or they all have to be together, or Austin and I have to get, you know, both together, they would be expected to mask up. It's going to vary a little bit, classroom by classroom, but they're going to try and space and mask be able to come off during the classroom time. A student who's out for a short period of time will be provided in curriculum and be helped on, just like if someone pulls their kid out to go on vacation, the teacher will work with them. There will be an option, and that's one of the items, like a online curriculum for a student who's helped conquer money, is for a parent who's uncomfortable sending their student to school, or someone who develops, you know, symptoms or has to be pulled out, and they'll be able to go to a wholly online, district-supported program. And right now, we're in the kind of game of chicken, because we need to know from parents how many students are not going to attend, and that will determine what that looks like. If we have a significant number of students who elect to, you know, receive their instruction at home and not attend school physically, then we'll reallocate teachers and have teachers dedicated to those students. And essentially, if you're running an online school within the school, if it's only a handful of students that are doing it, we probably rely entirely on the curriculum and maybe just have one person in the district that oversaw that. So parents kind of need to know what the online program looks like, so they can make a decision. We kind of need to know how many students who want to use it to.
Make a bid.
So there's, the communication has gone out as best we can, and what the online offering looks like, and we're, these surveys going out the next week in terms of the online offering. If things change as we go throughout the school year, and we have to move to more of an online base, then those two, which will come on. And that's part of the reason for the one-to-one device, is that would make it more seamless in the event that you have an entire class, if it's quarantined, or you have, you know, significant infection rate, you have a lot of kids going to home, or you end up in a situation where school is shut down again. It should be able to be a lot more seamless than it was last spring.
Thanks for that update. So do we want to do these kind of group by group, or just wait for the?
I'd like to do them group by group, if that's okay with you. I'd like to do the school district ones, and then we can move on to maybe emergency management, and then fire and EMS. So I'll make a motion on this, if that, yes. Go for it.
Clarification, so on the outdoor wireless, we are pursuing a possibility to re-rate of getting some funding for that. And I don't know if that's going to finalize or not, but it may procedurally, you know, if you approve this, may not be another funding. If we, we would communicate with someone who, or to Austin and say, we're looking at this off of that.
Yeah, if you'll just let us know, you can either, well, let, let me know if the council's okay with that, if you'll let me know, because I've just been kind of keeping track of this. And I think what we'll do is, you know, we'll approve it at this $100,000 rate. Obviously, that's probably a round number, you probably don't know the exact cost.
Yeah, that's the one that's.
And that's fine, but, you know, we'll prove it up to that cost, and then if you happen to get other funding, maybe you get enough to cover half of it, and we can kick in the rest, or whatever. Okay, perfect. So I'm going to make a motion, if that's okay, Mr. Chair, that we approve all of the items listed on this sheet for the school district, and I'll name those just briefly. The soft enclosures for the bus drivers, cafeteria tables, iPads, Chromebook replacements, Google admin licenses for the Chromebooks, state license for online curriculum, cameras for desktop computers, and outdoor wireless internet for the schools. Is there more on there? Oh, I'm sorry, and the backpack sanitation machines, I skipped them. I apologize.
So, and those items, is, that's your total, the 321, 401, 50?
Correct. Yep, that's a total of 321,401, 50. And obviously, this is to be paid for from the CARES Act funds.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Member Newton, second by Member Cannon. Any questions on the motion?
I have a technical question for you. What is a soft shield enclosure for a bus driver?
It's, it's a clear vinyl, it's soft, the trick in enclosing the bus drivers, who all of our bus drivers groups are high-risk people, is DOT doesn't allow Plexiglas or any of those type of conditional barriers for safety, it's inside of vehicles. So it's like a soft which, and maybe the, goes behind the driver, and on the side is Velcros.
Okay.
To the thing, so that if the driver had to get out in the event of, you know, an emergency, he can just push through the Velcro, they can see through it, but it's.
It's a bubble for the bus driver.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a lot less money than a spacesuit.
That's like, you gotta provide one for every day that I'm supposed to.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further questions on the motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Well, even, even if we approved every single thing, we wouldn't go over, we know that, so. Yeah. And that was the point of putting a whole list, so that we knew where we stood.
Okay. Where did you want to go next?
Okay, let's go to emergency management next. Austin, do you want to talk to that?
I don't want you guys to think I pulled a bait and switch on you, but I kind of have.
You did.
I'm sorry. I hear where it says salary for the emergency manager. About 70, 75, 80% of my time is dedicated towards dealing with the coronavirus, especially the phone calls and delivering PPE and all that kind of stuff. I felt like it would be very good to use this money for, and appropriate. I know other agencies are using a percentage to, for example, like Member Newton, that a portion of his responsibility now is dealing with this. I know other agencies that a portion of their city manager, they're using 20% CARES money to pay for them for the administration of the. Anyway, long story short, I actually got the EMPG grant. The state came to me and said, we want you to apply for this, and anyway. So I don't want to mix two federal funds to pay my wage.
So we probably need to take this off. And just for clarification for the council, the EMPG grant is the grant that we have historically had that's paid a portion of the emergency manager's salary. However.
Kind of went away for a while.
It went away because we failed to do the reporting for a time.
And now it's coming back.
Yeah.
So.
So I agree with you, Austin, I think we ought to strike the salary portion from here, just to be safe.
Yeah.
If everybody else is okay.
So Austin and I had had that email exchange over it too, and in those conversations with other officials, there is real concern that anything that we had priorly budgeted for, that is the language of the statute. And if they go back to the actual language for enforcement, then we are, then we are.
Going to have some issues.
Yeah, so we.
That being said, all of the frequently asked questions from the feds and that call that went on with UAC, one of the main questions on there, one of the first questions was about salary, and both of them did clarify that if, if they are emergency, what did they call them? Public health and safety personnel, the presumption is they're not going to make you prove out for those employees, the presumption is that their responsibilities have shifted to deal with coronavirus, so they are eligible.
Yeah.
That being said, I agree, let's just, let's not, let's not risk it, right?
Yeah.
Let's, okay, so we're going to strike the salary, if everybody's okay with that.
Having said that, we just printed off today a couple message boards that we want to try to put in, and I can bring this back another day, so we can have more discussion about it. But a couple message boards that we, the three-foot by six-foot, the ones you see on the side of the interstate, and say, wear your seatbelt, or whatever they want you to put on that, we'd like to get a couple of those message boards, because as much as we think we can get the information out on Morgan Moms, or what have you, what venue, there's still people in the community that don't, don't hear that, you know? Most people don't. Some people. don't. Some people, believe it or not, don't have Facebook.
How old are you?
He does. I'm sorry. We'll talk about it.
I'm serious. I, I know a few people that don't have Facebook. Having said that, these message boards, we could use those when it comes to times, supposedly there's going to be some kind of a, something coming out in October, some kind of a, I don't want to say it here, it just left me.
Vaccine.
A vaccine, a possibility of a vaccine. So, that would be something we could utilize in case we have a close point of distribution, or an open point of distribution, where we're going to start distributing that. These would be a
So, Austin, Boyd had included a couple of electric traffic signs, which are similar type thing for displaying message. Are we talking about this in addition?
Well, no. He took those, so that's why he proposed down those signs.
The ones that are already on here?
Right. And they're going to be multi-purpose. They will be for letting people know, like, if they're in line for a vaccine, it would be great to let people know how far the vaccine drew out. It'd be great to let them know how long we're going to run as they're driving through, because they're going to be in the cars. And then, once, once this is all over, we can utilize them, we can give them to the road department, and now they can score them, and maybe some on the road for us. If we have a big fire, we can pull them out. While in a barren area, do not report. All sorts of things you can do. So, these would be huge. My main focus is getting information out to the public. I, I look at it as we could put one down in Mountain Green to, to capture all the Mountain Green people that are traveling out. We could also put one here close on State Street.
So, these are the generator-powered ones on here?
Actually, the quote I got is for solar power.
Solar power?
Actually, solar powered, and
Is that the same cost, about 20 grand apiece?
No.
No. What is
Look at that. We're saving them money.
So, that, that makes more sense to me. They are mobile. I thought we were doing it just at the fire station, in front of the fire station.
No, that's a different thing.
That's a different item.
Oh. I cannot keep track of all these
What was the price on those, Austin? Are we talking two?
Scratch off his amount, scratch off his amount of electric signs, and yes, yes.
So, we're talking two, and how much are they total?
Yes, I would like it. They're $14,550.
A piece?
A piece or a total?
A piece.
Oh, boy.
Say that again?
14,510.
Anybody else missing the newspaper?
29,100 is the total.
I think we could restart the newspaper for that now.
Yeah. Okay. Before you, before you go too far, though, let's go through these other items, too.
Okay.
Does anybody have any more questions on the, that electric signage, before we move on to something, other discussion? Okay. Let's talk about the light towers.
Okay. The light towers, I want everything mobile, so that we can be able to move our point of distribution. I know, long, long ago, there was discussions with an old emergency manager, where we actually had two points of distribution, one here and one at the airport. Last time you guys were at the airport at night, not super bright. And so, if we're going to move this point of distribution to other parts of the county, there's been discussion of possibly trying to do it at the fairgrounds. If you're up there at night, we don't have the light capacity that we'd want if we are going into October, the first part of October. So, these portable light plants are going to be to facilitate and lengthen the amount of time that we can work with people.
You can set up on the pickleball courts.
Yeah, the pickleball courts are very well-known.
As long as we go down to Mountain Green.
Only in Mountain Green.
The ones up here
Oh, really?
Don't have electricity quite
And the problem is, you're talking about, people will be in their cars for a point
of distribution, so you can't really have them drive across the pickleball court, right?
That's actually the easiest way to do it. I love your thinking of the pickleball courts. It's great. But, that's the way to contain people, so that we, social distancing, most people try not to, than six feet.
Have a big party.
So, it's a drive-by shot in the arm?
Potentially, yeah. That's part of the discussion. As, as much as you're laughing, Member Cannon, that's, hang your arm out the window, and that might be exactly what happens.
I'm glad it's your arm. That's hanging out the window.
Rather have the drive-by shot in the arm than the driver stick up the nose.
We're going to try to keep our, yeah, still our arms.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
You started it.
Who else started it?
Okay, so, we've got
Now, now let's talk about the HVACs and stuff, up at the search and rescue building.
Oh, my gosh, guys.
Quite, quite a few years ago, the search and rescue was, around 9/11, the search and rescue was designated as the secondary EOC for Morgan County. In case there was a massive amount of flooding come through, the primary EOC was over at the fire station. Since that time that it was set up, the emergency dispatch center that was set up over at the fire station is no longer there. The secondary dispatch center that we have up in the bottom of the search and rescue building is still there and still usable. So, thus, that's why the emergency operations center, we want that to change and be at the search and rescue building. Right now, probably not the greatest time to go up there for a visit, or to go spend some time up there, because it is extremely hot in the summertime. And the furnace up there right now, it's only in a small portion of the building.
So, why would it be at the search and rescue building and not at the new, the recently upgraded facility in the fire station?
All, all of the communication equipment is no longer over there that we need.
And it can't come back to where we need it?
Uh, I'm not really sure where it even is.
It was removed by the previous fire chief.
So, and the, I guess the other item here is, we need to have a, a primary and a secondary, right? I mean, that's, that's part of it as well.
Primary and secondary in the county, or?
Trying to switch that. So, our old secondary, I want to bring that up to be an operational and be in our primary.
Okay.
And, and this is for, I, I guess you guys are a lot more optimistic than I am that we're going to have a, the need of a point of distribution for vaccination be by October?
That's what they're saying at the health department right now. Not that the, they can't change. I'm not, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I
I personally am okay with it. We've, we've done the upgrades at the fire station. I don't think this is outside the realm of, of the, you know, it talks about being able to use these funds for facilities and, and for upgrading facilities. That could also, that facility could act as a, as a center for, you know, if we had to do an evacuation or something of some sort.
Oh, I agree with that. It's just whether or not we use all of our funding for things like this, instead of doing, I think there, there are other impacts for this, that, that go beyond the emergency services department. And I'm, I'm not discounting the impact it's had at the emergency services at all. What I am concerned about is that, that there are other needs. We've already upgraded one facility for emergency management. Are there other things that should be coming before that?
That's, that's
Yeah. Well, that, and, my understanding is, the building was supposed to come back on to the rental. If we're, if we're doing all these upgrades to that facility, and it's not being included in the rental of, for meetings for the public or anything else in that big room over there, that's where I actually got my concealed carry in that room. So, my concern is that I don't necessarily want
I think one thing
To create a really nice hangout for, that we're not necessarily including as part of county facilities that are available to the public.
I'm glad you brought that up, because if that facility's going to be rented out, is there a disclaimer attached to that, that if there's an emergency, that they don't get a, they get a refund?
I don't know, Austin. I, I really don't. But I don't think that the facility should be not rented out to the public. It's one of the nicer facilities in the county.
I, I'm, I'm not arguing that fact, but if, if that's, if that, it would be nice if we had a
Well, let's just
An ability to refund.
Well, let's just clarify. If you move your primary center of operations there, and we put in the HVAC system, it makes it a nicer facility to rent to the public. It allows you to operate there. But, does it preclude you from renting to the public, the space? Or is it, is it a different room where you have the communication equipment? Sounds like it's already there.
The communication equipment's already there. It's down in the basement.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it precludes you. It's just
But, but in an emergency, obviously, you'd have the priority of use.
Pick up the
And, and the lease agreement should indicate that this is
But that, that would be true of any facility in the county that was being rented for anything, because if you go into an, an emergency where we're now becoming a lockdown situation, and nobody's having a wedding reception.
We're probably going to cancel that one.
Yeah, the wedding reception's canceled.
As long as you guys are okay with that, then I don't
Yeah.
You know?
But I think that would be true wherever they rented, because if we were having an emergency situation, and, and we're using our emergency facility, it would cancel anything that the school rented.
In, in August, we're going to have a meeting, and potentially, I'd like to have it there. It's going to be over what happens if the dam breaches, or we have some issues with the town, that drove a renovation, so.
So
Get invites soon.
So, his proposal, as I understand it, is to put the HVAC system into the building. It would continue to be available for rental to the public, and it would also serve as your primary emergency operations center.
And I will support that, as long as that is part of, part of the understanding, that it becomes available for rental to the public. It goes back into availability.
Well, it still is. Yeah.
It would, it would be like using the auditorium, or
Right. That's exactly what, what it would be like. And that, and that's what I would expect.
Okay. So, one thing I want to address really quick, because you brought up a good point, Member Cannon, in terms of, well, I don't want to allocate all this money out and then not have it, or whatever. In our previous discussions, we've removed every one of the salary items from this. The total of those salary items is $464,000. So, this number at the bottom that was 1.4 million changes to 1,012,000, which still leaves us about $700,000 that's unallocated. So, I, I personally feel more comfortable about that. That means there's still some for the rest of the year, if something comes up and we need to, to allocate more, be it, you know, business grants or other needs. Maybe we're going to have to buy a lot more PPE. I don't know. The school district may come to us and say, we ran out of masks on the third day.
I know. We can give them for the fourth day.
Yeah.
We'll have to take a couple weeks off, so we can give them.
But, I mean, the point is, we still have, there's cushion here, is what I'm getting at.
All right.
So, hopefully, that puts everybody a little more
Can we leave the mask or a diaper on?
So, are we done with HVAC?
Yeah, I think so. We, we had on here a trailer for, for this equipment. Boyd also had a storage container for equipment. We need to coordinate the two
You can have one or the other.
And decide what, what do we need here.
Not both.
Do you want us to arm wrestle later about?
Yes, yes. I would like you to arm wrestle now.
We can get a 45-foot container, nine feet tall, eight feet wide, for about $3,500.
It's cheaper than a trailer. The question is, if, if we need to move equipment.
Thus, that's my concern.
You know what I mean?
If we try to do anything outside of just here at the fire station, if that's what you guys decide, this is your deal.
Well, I actually think a trailer would look nicer, not that we're all about the curb appeal.
I'm sure, I'm sure the firemen would paint it a nice white color. Probably not red. Or maybe red. It'll be red. We're not painting nothing, man. Then I get my trailer.
Just going to have a big rusty container.
Then I get my trailer.
I just, I just wonder if, if we do have to move some, don't we have enough trailers already in county possession? I mean, we've got a big one at the sheriff's department that just kind of houses the four-wheelers, but we could take those out in an emergency and move the equipment.
Right, right now, the one that houses the four-wheelers is full of cots and stuff, in case we need to open up the evacuation center. One of our older emergency managers scrolled away like 200 and somewhat cots, that it's in a trailer now. So, we're fine if, if you guys feel like the trailer's the better option. Or the trailer, we can, we can make it work.
Well, here's my thought. I, again, I don't want us to get hung up on one little item that we take too long. I would prefer that we agree on, perhaps we just say we're okay with spending up to $6,500, or some dollar amount. You two work it out, decide what the best
I'll defer to the container.
Okay. Is that what you want to do? You're good with that?
Yeah.
Then we're going to scratch the trailer off of here.
Then we'll, we'll refer to a container from
Okay. Okay. And then, we had the backpack sanitation machines for sanitizing the county facilities on here. I think those are pretty self-explanatory. We did just approve some of those for the school district as well. Those are the
Yeah.
They're like a fogging type machine that they wear and
And they are extremely efficient.
Okay. Sheriff's Department, we have PPE and gloves. Do you want to speak to that, or do, or does Jim want to speak to that?
No.
We just had an allowance of, like, $6,000 on here, is what we put for PPE and such.
We already spent some of that in buying sanitizer in the beginning.
Okay.
It's just, it's an ongoing thing that we're
I don't know that we need more clarification on it, unless somebody on the council wants to. To me, PPE is just
PPE.
It's, yeah.
We're allocating money to it. Okay. That's it, I think, for yours, right, Austin?
Yeah.
So, a question on the HVAC. You say you've got bids between the 15057 and the 27250.
I got in a third bid as well.
And it's lower than that. It's about 13,000 roughly.
I sent it on to Member Newton.
So, if we approve the 15057, we should be okay?
Then we can do one or the other. I, it sounded like, I mean, the, the most recent bid was the, the less, the least expensive bid, and it was just shy of 13,000. So. Okay. Any other questions on the emergency management items? And I'm including the traffic signs in the emergency management items, just to be clear. That changed from $40,000 to 29,100.
The two Lucas mechanical CPR chest compression, did we approve that, Austin?
We did.
They're here. Let's hope so.
In fact, they were ordered, yeah. Oh, they're here, huh?
Did you stick this on anybody, but they looked
You can have a heart attack now, John. You're
I'm going to refer, I mean, rings here in just a minute.
They're going to all pass this on you.
I'm excited to see how that works. Not on a person, but just to see how it works.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody have questions on emergency management, before we make a motion on those?
That's it.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion. Sorry.
So, sorry. The, the signs, we're going to drop that from 40 to 30.
Correct.
And that should still give us
The ones that you had done was, the total was 29,100, is the
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the emergency management items for CARES Act expenditures. I'll list those. The light towers, HVAC for the search and rescue, emergency operations center, COVID buster, backpack sanitation machines, PPE and gloves for the sheriff's department, and electric traffic signs to be used for information signs.
And that was 30,000 for that?
Yes, correct.
So, I think that totals about 71,500.
Yeah, I haven't totaled it, because I
It's close to that.
Let me total the exact amount here. $69,147.50 is the total of that. Okay, there's a motion.
Second.
Motion by Member Newton, second by Member Swan. Any questions on the motion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, let's-
Last thing, sorry.
Yes.
I just, looking at the Sheriff's Office, when it comes to economic development, is that window closed for businesses or?
No.
Okay.
No, in fact, I, I got your email. I hadn't responded, because I got several. We opened it back up, and I've got several, and then Davis County finally sent me their evaluation sheet, and then Duchesne County sent me theirs, so then now I have-
How many are we up to, do you know now? Total businesses?
18.
Okay. For, for purposes of this document, and we're not gonna approve this right now, I'm gonna change that number from 130 to 180, because that's-
They're not all for 10. They're, some of them are a lot lower.
And they may be less, but I just want to put worst-case scenario on here, so we're keeping track if everybody's good with that. I'd rather have it at least noted.
I just wanted to probably get it out there that that isn't closed, because I was talking to a businessman over the weekend, and he said, "Oh, I've missed the deadline."
No, we opened it back up, and so I'd asked Marne ECO to take the deadline off of it, because most of the other counties hadn't even opened theirs by the time ours had closed, so. I feel like I'm behind, and yet I am ahead of so many.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Fire and EMS. We had a few items still left from Boyd's list, and then we also have, well, all of the items for the, the point of distribution that are on here.
Can you summarize this in three minutes? I'm gonna time you.
Mine's super easy.
Give me the money. Do you want to start with the, let's see, fire station, lighting for the fire station is the first one on there.
So, this is all stuff we have not budgeted for. They're gonna need to have, fight, keep fighting the COVID. These are all your frontline people. This is where the pod's gonna be. So this is one thing we're gonna have to have, is some additional lighting in there. The lighting in there now is the old tube lighting that they don't even use anymore. So this would be, this is absolutely essential for it.
And that will be movable. That was the stipulation. We put it on last time, is that if we upgrade it and build a new building, that lighting will be able to go with it.
A hundred percent.
They were talking like LED-type lighting.
Yes.
High-efficiency lighting.
High-efficiency, so we're gonna save on energy.
But these are standalone lights that bolt around?
They bolt down there.
No, these would be hanging from the ceiling.
We can take them down and move them to a new building.
Don't pull yourself, Tina. Those don't go anywhere. When they build a new building, it will include the new lighting.
Hey, I was trying to feel good about it.
Trying to save us some money here. They'll go to the fairgrounds. That's probably where they'll go.
They'll go to the fairgrounds for the rest of the scrap stuff.
Okay.
As long as it's in the display buildings, that will be fine. It's an upgrade.
That could use it.
I think we already talked about the shipping container, right?
We talked about shipping container, yeah.
Okay, so that one's to那儿. Okay.
And did we help out getting paid back for the shower and laundry facility?
I have noted on, and I didn't do it on this sheet. I screwed up, but I had it noted that we approved that at the last meeting. I hadn't put it on here, so that was approved already.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We had done that in the laundry facilities, correct?
Yeah, the laundry facility. That's the one he's talking about, the laundry facilities, that- I hadn't put the date on the one in our packet. I apologize. I fixed that now. So the only other item, Boyd, is the marquee sign and then all the pod items.
All the pod stuff is, all the stuff we've got to have for the pod. And the way they talk is probably gonna happen, and the county needs to be ready for it. To be ready for it, we need this stuff. And we can put it all in the storage container, and if we decide to have the pod here and somewhere else, we'll set it up, and it'll be super easy.
So any of this have another use in some other way if we-
Absolutely.
Okay.
It's not gonna sit around.
So the total cost on the pod items was 40,800. Not including the container where it'll be stored.
Well, what about the marquee sign?
Are you including the marquee sign?
The marquee sign, I think, yes.
So that's a permanent one?
Yes.
You know, I never, I'm not, four months and 27 days, I'm not going to drive by it anymore, Boyd.
Who's counting the number of days, huh?
I don't know who would be counting down. I've loved every-
And I'm gonna drive you by that sign.
Anybody have any questions on any of the rest of the items?
So, we deleted the wages. We're deleting the electric traffic signs because that went into the EMS budget.
Emergency management, yep. Emergency management budget, sorry. Okay. And I mean, I guess it's really all under the same budget, but anyway. I tried to break it out, so we knew which departments these were going to.
All right. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Anybody else want to make a motion this time, or do you want me to do it?
You're so good at it, Mike.
Yeah, I know what you want.
I will do it here. Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following items to be purchased using CARES Act funding for Morgan Fire EMS. Item number one is the lighting for the fire station totaling 14,000. Item number two, a shipping container to be used for storage for pod items and, and PPE totaling 5,500. The marquee digital sign for the fire station for purposes of communication to the community totaling 60,000. And then the pod items, point of distribution items, which total 40,800.
I'll second that.
Okay. And I did not do a total on just those items. Do you want a total on just those items?
Uh, yeah, let's just go ahead and get it in.
Okay, so we have, let's see. Tolling that right now.
While he's adding that up, Boyd, between the PA system and the tents, canopies, and the generators, if you have a wedding coming up, I'm going to be very suspicious.
Outdoor.
I'm sticking a J on there.
So I'm good?
So the total for that is 120,300.
You sure?
That's what I have. Did I do that right? I have 14,000 on the lighting.
Right.
I have 5,500 on the, on the thing, 60,000 for the marquee, and 40,800 for the pod items.
120,300, is that what you got?
Correct.
Where, where is this marquee 60,000? Explain this.
It's the bottom of the second page, very bottom.
No, explain why it's, I can get a portable one for 14.
Right, but, you know, like, the portable ones are, are portable and you can go around, but the one out here is gonna be stationary forever.
Be the same as Mountain Green one.
It'll be double-sided, so you can see it from both directions.
Again, it's gonna use life far beyond our years.
Oh, no, Boyd, I have a lot, I have a long, long time in mind for you in that job.
Not going anywhere. So-
All right, so, so we have a motion by Member Newton, second by Member Swan. Total expenditures are 120,300 in these, those line items. Any questions on the motion? Did you have one?
No, that, that was it. I, I'm not saying no. I'm seriously questioning, how could that, something like that be that expensive? It just doesn't make sense.
That being said, I want to, I want to point out, I think you, I don't know how many bids you've gotten on that. We will still need to get three bids and go with the best bid, but that's our worst-case scenario.
Yeah, that's-
Can we want something nice for our county, right, our citizens to deserve?
No, because then it would stand out. Sorry, that was not nice, but.
Okay, a motion and a second. No further questions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we will be ready if this ever pod comes available. We'll be ready when we're fully equipped.
Awesome.
October 3rd. That'll be later, just good.
Thank you.
Yeah, because, yeah, I'm holding you to October 3rd.
So I've updated the items on my spreadsheet here, just to give an update. And I increased that economic development grant to 180, just to make sure we're covering all of that. We're now up to 1,107.17.
Do you have an update on the county items?
Which county items?
Just where we're at in-
I don't. I do not. I'll have to get with Jeremy and see where we're at on those items.
Let me give you an update where we're at.
Okay.
So you all should have received your tax valuation notices this week.
Oh, I did. Oh, I did.
I almost brought it to discuss some items, but.
This year, we won't be having, we probably won't have physical Board of Equalization hearings, which will require us to do them on Zoom meetings. If you were carved back when we were having our Zoom meetings, most of us don't have cameras. So I'll be faced with the challenge of, we won't be able to have our Board of Equalizations via Zoom. We'll probably have to have them by phone. This week, while we were trying to work out some of our audit problems, we couldn't have a Zoom meeting, because most of our equipment isn't, we don't have cameras.
So we need to have probably that discussion with Jeremy, because my intent in approving this, and, and I would guess the rest of the council, is these new laptops should have cameras in them, because they should be decent quality.
I, I have to tell you that I prefer Zoom meetings without the camera.
I was doing that, however, me too.
Yeah. Distracting.
I, I would like to see that-
Mine has a closed thing.
You know, that, that be, I know that it was noted high priority. I'd like to know where we're at as far as what is the priority, where are we at? You know, we had a need for a laptop this week. We're still not ready. Now, I didn't have any, but it was a need.
I have not followed up with Jeremy on it, but we can definitely do that.
Austin, how many active cases do we have currently?
Ah, I just put my notes away. 12. We have 12 active cases in the county.
What are their age ranges, do you know?
Uh, I don't have that. I can quickly look it up. What I do know is yesterday, and yesterday, there was 339 new cases, active cases, come in, in the state, and today, there was 361. So the state was hoping to get down under 400 for school, and the last two days, across our fingers, that's actually happened. So, I'm sorry, let me, I'll put in-
Yeah, I-
Debbie's writing that for me.
Because isn't that, 12 seems higher than what we've been?
We've been right around 16 to 12. We're down actually a little bit.
Okay.
It's just got to break out of, we've had 46 cases in Morgan. One was between the ages of 1 and 14, 12 between the ages of 15 and 24, 14 between the ages of 25 and 44, 11 between the ages of 45 and 64, and we have eight that have been over 65.
No deaths.
That's the entire amount. Yeah, it, yeah, knock on wood somehow, that we haven't had anybody pass away at this point.
If we're buying a lot of new computers and printers and for the pod, I'd still like to see that the county, the building is still priority for Jeremy than equipping a pod that may not be used until October.
Correct.
We're still in crisis mode here.
I agree.
Well, which brings me back to, to the internet. None of this is gonna work if we don't have internet throughout the county, which remains a concern.
And I think that's-
Oh, we're all sitting in the school parking lot.
There's two items left on this list. One is internet, and one is the small business grants, which we will get to once we get the applications, and we'll approve those individually. So let's talk about the internet now, and I know Member Cannon and Member Kilmer both had discussions with, with All West. Would, would one of you like to-
So in our, in our last meeting, there were a few questions that were brought up concerning internet, and I tried to remember exactly what they were, but I, I think I got some of them. I passed those on to Jack and asked him if he could be here tonight and discuss that, as well as present their kind of long-term plan of how they would approach bringing internet to the county. So if you guys are okay, invite him up to the podium and-
Sure.
Give us an update.
Jack, walking person with All West Communications. She's got the opportunity to be here tonight. Worked with Councilmember Cannon, Cannon, Councilmember Kilmer, and Councilmember Newland. A little bit on this. I was thinking back. I've stood at this podium a few times over the last seven and a half years as we've worked at things here in Morgan County. Just a quick background here for those that aren't aware of All West is we're a telecom communications company, internet service provider, video provider. Headed quarter to Camas, so I'm not too far from here. We've served in Camas, Summa County, Los Angeles County, Rich County. For the beginnings, go back to 1912. Telephone and high-speed internet service provider since the early 90s. In 2018, we built fiber, built conduit down the canyon from Enover. Terminated that along the interstate just outside of San Jose, out in the new UDOT building there. And we blew fiber in that conduit down as far as Croydon, because we had a agreement with Olson, the provider, in high-speed, and we've done that. Been providing that service for the last 10 years. Looking at, we kind of had some plans as we brought that conduit down. Some of those changed a little bit, so we had to back off and rethink our, our plans in Morgan County. We did not stop thinking about Morgan County. We're just didn't go any further with that. We have fiber as far as Croydon. We don't have fiber in the conduit down to Morgan.
How long would it take to run that conduit, or the fiber in the conduit?
Probably the biggest thing there, fiber is on the back order substantially.
Oh, I can't imagine how that would happen.
I know there's a bunch along the freeway just down in Riverdale.
Is that fiber or conduit?
It's fiber.
That's the way they do stuff.
Fiber, they're a kind of an arm to the market.
Yeah, that's very true. And we can, you know, we have contacts. We have relationships with different vendors. Had this discussion with our president earlier today as we're talking about this potential meeting. We can, you know, if we can work together and we decide to go forward mutually, we can find some fiber to blow down. I mean, we're probably talking another four weeks to get it installed, so we have it installed twice. And that will bring it down to the end of our conduit there, the exit.
So that, that takes you down to the, to the UDOT sheds or to the exit, the second?
It could take us as far as the UDOT sheds.
Okay.
The conduit too. And we have agreements with UDOT to share in their conduit. We would install additional conduits in their conduit that they have along the interstate before. And that will get us on down to Mountain Green, which will help Morgan County as well. Because we look at it long-term, it's not only servicing Morgan County, but having another end of the path to Los Angeles County.
So just, just to clarify for everybody who may be listening or watching, Jack, once you run that conduit along 84, you're able to pop up and do a, a tower every so often so that you can provide service along that pathway?
We could do that, and we, with the that option, we can also branch off to different locations, you know, the interchanges, and start to take conduit, fiber out into the bigger county community and look at what makes sense. You know, long-term, fiber is really the medium that you want to use. Fixed wireless towers are a good medium for short-term, and some of the more rural areas would be good. So that, that's what we've looked at. I mean, we've- I mean, we've put budget numbers together, what it would take to serve the entire county. We have those. We've done some safety engineering on that. We're looking at it, if it works out and we come into Morgan County, we're all looking at it. It's a long-term relationship.
So have you been working with Rebecca Dilch through GOED and finding all, is there a way that Morgan County can partner with some of those grants and some of that funding that's available to make this happen?
I think there probably is. I haven't talked with Rebecca in the last few weeks, but I think there are things to the government's obviously trying to develop.
She's, she's attending our 8 o'clock meeting in the morning. I can follow up with her if you'd like, and we can see what we can do as far as if, I'm thinking if we can pyramid some of these things, it might go faster. I, not that I'm impatient, but I'm impatient. And school's going to start, and the whole point is to have it available for kids so they're not hanging out in the school parking lot for Scott to worry about, but. And I think that's part of, part of, I don't, I'm pretty sure everybody in the county's been experiencing that is more people are home and more are on the internet constantly in meetings, how much slower it is. We need to, even those who have it are not having it, so.
Well, and I think one thing to, as we're talking about that as well, and one thing that I outlined in my email response the last couple of days. You know, really, we're looking at what we're thinking is first services matter.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we will need to look at some other things this year, for really long-term first services.
So, Jack, one of the things that NACO did two, maybe three years ago now, is they did the Tested App, and I know that data is available nationally. And I tried to spread the word on that through all of the county employees as they're traveling through, doing different things to test in the different areas. And that, that testing app and that data, as it comes back in, that is how we qualify for those federal funding dollars. So it's important for the county to know that and to use that testing. By the way, in here, my connection is below the FCC benchmark, just now tested that. With 25 over 3 MPS down versus up.
And that, and that is the best one, it's 25 down, 3 up.
So.
I don't think I've ever seen those numbers any time on my internet. Not even at 3 o'clock in the morning.
That's pretty good. Hard to get double digits.
But as we go forward, I think, yeah, that, I, I know you appreciate that time is of the essence on this, and I wish we would have done it. As in most emergency situations, we wish we would have prepared a year ago, so.
Well, and it's like anything else, you look back and say, we wish we had. What's the next best, best option is to make.
Yeah.
There are, there are some other federal funds available with some of the areas in Morgan County or the more outlying areas through the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, which we are prepared, you know, we are looking at and analyzing as well. And some of those funds will come available through an auction process later this year. There's some, some other options.
All right.
So, for purposes of the CARES Act funding, and it pains me to say this because I'd really love to be able to, to put something towards this, but given the timeline, we have to spend this money and actually use it before December 31st.
And have the project.
And the project has to be done. We can't say, well, we're going to put it towards something that might be done in the future. That being said, I don't, I don't see that as a realistic possibility for, for what we're talking about here.
I agree.
I think we need to continue this discussion because I think we still need to work to get good internet service for the county. But I think for purposes of the CARES Act funding, we need to remove this one from the list. What are your thoughts?
How do you feel about it, Jack? Is that accurate?
We, we agree as well, yeah.
All right. So we'll keep, we have our Economic Development Grant that we're working on. There's an Innovation Center Grant that's still on there. We have it, and I'm, I'm working with that property owner.
We can't.
Negotiating on that and putting in a support letter for that grant. So that, that one's available, and, and then if we work with Rebecca on it, we may have some other ways to continue this discussion and bring it. So we're not ready for the next emergency, how about that?
That sounds good. We're very willing to continue those discussions as well.
And if, Jack, if All West will continue to work towards this goal, you know, the legislature, the Congress has another proposal in front of them to extend the use of these funds and actually increase the amount of funds. And so more could possibly happen if we're ready to jump on board. And so, I mean, as you've heard, we're not spending all this money on that. So if all of a sudden you get in a position where we can move forward.
Yeah.
Well, by all means, the bill's still very ready as well.
Yeah.
Well, that sounds good.
So, for the time being, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we remove that internet item from our list, our CARES Act list. And of course, this is not a final list, you know, like you just said.
We need a motion to pull.
And I guess we don't need to move a motion, just as long as we agree, I guess, just can, yeah.
I don't care if you leave it on there, just not approved at this time.
Okay, then I'm going to leave it on.
Yeah, that's probably the best way to go because I'm still holding out hope springs eternal, Jack.
As am I.
You get fiber in my street, I'm signing up. I'll give you the deposit right now. Okay. Like having to go out and turn an old crank on your car.
Mine works really good.
Yeah. You're in good shape, huh?
I know another guy that says his works really good until the leaves come out on the trees, and then he can't get internet all summer. And then when the leaves fall off, he's got great internet all summer.
Mine was like that, they had to, they had to move it. But mine, mine slows down about 9 o'clock when everybody else gets on a Zoom meeting. So stop scheduling Zoom meetings at 9 o'clock, everybody.
Okay, so I think that brings us to the end of that.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, so the next item is a discussion decision on a proposed amendment to the lease agreement with the U.S. Forest Service. This is for the building out at the airport. I love the way they do this. They send you a letter and they say, we'd really like you to modify our lease. And they indicate, they add other requirements with respect to their HVAC system. There's no proposal to increase the rent. But as I read it, we would be responsible to make the modifications to the HVAC system.
I guess we need to add that to COVID funding?
But I was reading that this is as a result of new requirements based on the coronavirus.
Yeah, but as we continue to work through the challenges brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, the Forest Service would like air conditioning in our offices.
And that's what I was thinking. And, and just to give you an update, Robert, we have, I think, three companies currently bidding this, but they just couldn't get the bids put together before tonight.
Okay. So, yeah, I, I, look, if we can utilize those funds to do it, the advantage to working with them is we'd like them, keep them as a long-term tenant of the lease. The current lease is not particularly long-term. In fact, it's quite short really for a building. So, all right. So what I'll do is I'll respond to them, tell them we're looking into what it would cost us to do this and funding sources, and then if you can get me the bids, then hopefully.
I'll send those out as soon as we get them. He was really hoping we'd have at least one of them so we'd have an idea. But then he's, he's gone the rest of the week, and so we won't see anything until this Monday.
Okay, so I'm just going to go ahead and notify them that we're, we're working on it, and we'll get back to them.
So this is their, their facility at the airport?
Correct. The helicopter.
So we just add that into all of those other upgrades at the?
Yeah, I, I think we absolutely can, and we'll use this letter as our justification too, saying this is COVID-related because.
You meant add all the other upgrades into the COVID.
Oh, no, I was actually adding this one to your list for next week. But yeah, he, he justifies it with needing the ventilation because of COVID.
All right. Member Kilmer, approval of new fairground board bylaws.
So you've had that for a few weeks now. You got any questions, comments?
I had a couple just on the groups exempt from the rental fees. I thought the fair should be on there.
Oh, well, the reason it's not listed is because it is a county department. I mean, it's a county department. These others are private clubs.
Okay, that makes sense.
We don't charge any, that's actually been a big topic of discussion in the past. But in, in my tenure here, we have really transitioned the fair from a separate volunteer organization to basically a county entity. And so we consider them just county, and we don't, we don't require them to pay any fees. We don't require them, it's, they're just part of the county.
Okay. And then my only other comment was that exempting groups from fees approved by one member of the council. I would say it would be the council. I mean, I know that's kind of tedious, but I worry that somebody will accuse somebody else of.
We just need to clean that up because if you look at another sentence that says exemption from fees require county council approval.
So it's just a typo?
Yeah, we just need to clean that up. Also, I think we decided we want to remove the Morgan Riding Club. I spoke with her, and she indicated that she is probably moving out of the county if nobody has been willing to take it up.
Have you even heard of that?
Yeah, who's the Morgan?
They're usually the ones you see at the rodeo that do the big flag thing around the arena. They ride the horses with the flags. So these people that are on here are typically on here because they are ones that helped build the fairgrounds in the first place, and so that's kind of what they were given for all their efforts that they put in. That's why they're on there. But she indicated that she didn't see this club existing anymore after this year, so.
That's too bad.
If you're going to remove her, you can remove the search and rescue because you just stand at them and turn it over to the sheriff's department.
Correct, yes, we could remove them also.
Is it for me?
Where's the provision on the exemption? I see the, the provision where you're saying the one member.
Oh, from, oh, from the exemption, okay. I was looking at the voting numbers because, does that mean that they won't be a voting number on the board anymore either? Because Morgan Riding Club's on there.
Right. So we clean that one up.
One question I had, we don't have anything on renting the parking area, do we?
I would have to look at rental agreement. Do you remember, Jan, you helped us revise that last year?
No, I don't, I don't remember.
The facilities don't have a checkmark or a box for the parking area. And the only reason I ask is I noticed particularly this year, the rail, the railroad kind of set up shop there.
Well, that's every year.
And they brought in a lot of stuff and really.
That's every year.
And while I don't mind that, I think if they're going to do that on county property, there probably ought to be some type of an agreement, you know?
In the past, we usually got some pretty good concessions from the railroad. Recently, we haven't been getting those. But that's kind of how we justify just letting them use that during their repairs. But you might be on to something because we're not really getting it. My understanding is the new person that's in charge of working with the local communities is not quite as giving as previous. So maybe we need to start charging for those.
Well, and I'm not necessarily advocating charging, but at least I think they need to come to us and, and acknowledge when they're going to do it and fill out a form. Come to the, come to the county and say, hey, we, we want to use this parking area because what happens if they do?
They usually just come to our public works.
Okay.
And he, he tells them.
Maybe that's sufficient, I don't know.
But I don't have a problem if you want.
While you're at it.
They have an individual, that's his job is to work. Maybe that would be a good way to get him here where we can talk to him and work out some of the issues we have.
Have some discussions.
Do we need to take out the no alcoholic beverages or, or drugs? You can leave the drugs, but no alcoholic beverages. Maybe possessed or consumed on fairground property with, because we did the beer garden.
But I don't think we have taken that out of our.
No, we, we did a one-time exception for that. It was a.
So if they did an exception again, they could essentially, okay.
Yeah.
There was one other thing on, get back up there, on the members of the board. On the two at-large members. They have requested that potentially at least, at least one of those, well, on the at-large members, they, they think that our public works director should have input on who those people are. He is invited to all these meetings, but he's a non-voting participant. But they think he should have at least a vote on that issue just because he has to work with this board so closely. They think that maybe he should have some input on that. How do you guys feel about that? I didn't add that in.
So it was interesting to me on, on the economic development ground, when the, when the state sent out their requirements on the at-large members, they were very specific in the type of at-large member, the same way the airport does. They want a pilot or they want someone who owns one of the rental hangars so that you have some buy-in, so I, and some interest in the item. I would think that would be fine to do if you want to define it as two at-large members to be chosen by. That makes more sense so that you're not, so that there's some direction on who you're looking for and some qualifications for it if you have more than, in the rare event that you have more volunteers than you need. Maybe you don't have that problem on the fair, maybe that's only on the.
No, no, they still have that problem.
On the rec board.
That's a good point.
So do you want to make those and grade them?
That's up to you guys. If you want me to, if you want me to just write them down and make them and you approve it, that's fine. If you want me to bring it back, that's fine. It's not like if we don't do it, if we don't do it today, the fairgrounds board is going to shut down. Put on green.
Could you, could you talk to them about perhaps instead of having to go through the extension office, create reservations, that we do it through the reservation system with Jeremy?
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot more sense.
And my phone number is on there, I don't know that Jan's phone number.
So, I'm just trying to figure out how we'd make that work because it's quite, it's not as simple as just getting on and making a reservation. They have to go through and fill out that application, and it has to have approval from different departments.
Right.
So it's just a little more involved process than, than renting a pavilion or, is my only thing. But we can look at that because we can always add that, make that change later, but that's a little bigger process. We don't want to give up that control we have of who gets in there, what they're doing, and how it's being managed too much.
So licenses, permits, and insurance?
Thought we were moving to all of these things being online. But I, I don't know, I don't do the.
Okay.
Licenses, permits, and insurance, just that phone number, 829-6811. If you want to change it to 845-4010. I don't think that 6811 line goes anywhere anymore. And then Jan is 4006 still.
I didn't even, I didn't even think about that when you handed me this. It's 845.
4010.
4010, okay. And then we want to make sure that the exemptions.
Licenses and permits.
Are approved by the council. And in our discussion, the only thing I remember was that it didn't have to have the entire council's signatures. It just had to be one signature on that exemption. But that's, once the council approves that, the chair would be signing that anyway, correct?
He might as well.
Probably, yeah.
Anything else? We tried to include all the licenses, permits, everything that we have currently in there.
I've spent a lot of time working from home.
See, even, even some of the people that are exempt still have to pay the cleaning fee. And if they don't clean it up, then they have to.
Still have to do the deposit.
Do the deposit, that's what I was trying to say.
Okay.
Anything else? So what I have is that we will include public works director in approving the at-large members, change the clerk's office phone number. Exemptions must be approved by the council and remove the riding club as a member.
On both, on.
And as exemptions.
Yeah, so as a voting member and on the exempt along the search and rescue.
Yeah, there's no reason to have them, although they're already exempt because they are. And other than this, if you want to use the fairgrounds, anybody can go over and use the fairgrounds just like our parks at any given time. It's just if you want it for your own personal use, then you, and you don't want people to be able to come in and share with you, then you've got to reserve it, pay the fees. But this is how the board will operate.
Okay.
I think I have COVID. I was going dead on the iPhone.
I'll make those changes and just bring it back. Does that work? Or do you want to just approve it and I'll make those changes?
I'm good either way if somebody wants to make a motion.
I'm okay.
Keep our agenda shorter next time.
I'm okay approving it with the. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the new fairgrounds board bylaws or the updated fairgrounds board bylaws with the changes noted in today's meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Member Newton, seconded by Member Swan for approval with the changes noted. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Stacy, do you want me to make those or do you want me to send you a Word copy?
Either way.
I can do, I can do.
I don't have a Word copy, you'd have to.
Yeah, I've got a Word copy, I can send it.
Okay, Member Cannon, discussion decision continuation from our July seventh meeting. The economic development partnership is recommended updates to the Morgan Strategic Economic Plan. County council review and update the Morgan Economic Plan.
Okay, so I had one, one more member of, I don't have my list. See if my, my iPad just went dead. Ron Hales added to the CED board as a business owner in the community, living in the community. And then we can discuss, then the rest of it is open for any other changes that you want. I tried to make all of the changes that were recommended. I sent it to you in a Word document, so now everyone else can change it, so.
So there was one item that, we previously had some, some stuff about scenic byways.
Yeah, and that scenic byway was already approved, but we haven't. Daryl was the signage guy, so that's the road. It was approved, what year was Steve? It was the first year we did economic development.
Two and a half years ago. It was in the spring of, it's been two and a half, three years ago.
Yeah.
You're talking Highway sixty-five, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything that we need to put back in this plan regarding that to finish that up or is it done?
So it's approved through the state. The thing that was left was the funding for it and Daryl was trying to work it into one of his other projects because he was doing the project where they're repaving it now. He was going to put it in. So when I talked to Daryl about it, he said that he was still willing to help because he was working with Beth Mitchell over the placement of the marker at Devil's Slide as well. So I was hoping he was still going to finish those as a volunteer. So I tried to take out all the ones that we had finished.
Do you have a typed in email?
So.
I do. I'm, I'm sorry because I think I got your email, but I thought it was just the stuff that you went through earlier, so I didn't get.
No, there's another one. There's another way in there. But the board, the board will go over it tomorrow and then we'll bring it back again for final approval. But if you wanted to give some direction before the board discusses it tomorrow, the way that, the way the grant is structured is that we would be, the board is directing the recommendations and then the council votes on it. So as this back and forth has been going on, if you want to steer them in a direction because, like I said, it's four months and twenty-seven days and whatever happens after that, maybe you want to have more input on.
Any additional comments for?
Is there anything that you guys feel strongly about that the board should be discussing on what the priorities are that I, it's not necessarily a vote as much as give me some directions, some, something that you feel passionate about for the emphasis where we want to go.
I think I gave you some comments the last time. I'll just have to, I'm sorry, I just have to go back and find the right email then.
That's all right. I think I got, well, I'm not saying I got all the changes because that stupid document, the way I had to bring it across wouldn't keep consistent in the numbering. So I'm really glad that Carol's the secretary and she can fix that now.
I already sent you my comments, so.
Yeah, I think I got all of those in. Is there anything that we wanted to add or to emphasize for the Taggart's area going forward on the river?
That's a good question. I'll look at it again and provide more feedback tomorrow in that meeting if there's anything else.
So.
Anything further?
So we just need to approve Ron Hales was a member of the CED board.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the appointment of Ron Hales as a member of the Community Economic Development Board.
Second.
So we have a motion by Member Newton, seconded by Member Cannon to approve Ron Hales as a member of the board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Just an FYI, the, the grant money did come from the state. About fifty thousand four hundred came from the state. I, I really don't think we transferred that ten thousand over to Brown for last year's work at Taggart's either. So it would.
Oh.
Um.
We've got last year's and this year's.
Yeah.
I think it ended up, it ended up being less than ten thousand last year.
Oh, yeah.
As I recall.
Don't tell the state.
Well, it didn't include labor or anything. It was just, just materials.
Yeah, so the managed part of it was there.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn unless there's something else.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion requiring no second.
Ken?
A shout of acclamation.
Do you have a minute? I actually was asking.